Funny, funny, funny.
All right, it is six thirty on Beautiful March fourth, like five. Uh, I'll do a motion and then I'll say our welcome, may the little marks. I have a motion to accept the agenda. Okay, thank you, second by Ms. Conley, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, ah, the Citrus Slipboard and Advisory Board, encouraging environment and respect our meetings and encourage all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreements. We value the participation of our community and want everyone, including marginalized and minoritized communities, welcome and respected. We urge our committee members and everyone who participates to commit to these standards, support and respect our lovely community and to participate in an orderly and peaceful manner. With that, I believe we have to, so tonight we're having a, uh, a joint meeting, I think, I forgot to open.
You have one shy for form for the advisory committee, we're waiting for someone to log in.
Oh.
I don't think you want to take something else out.
Can we do walk-ins or?
Yeah, let's do.
Okay.
Not really done.
Dan's in.
Not have a walk.
There is Dan.
All right.
Thirty.
All right, so may I have a motion from the advisory, oh, sorry.
He was gonna go first.
Sorry.
Oh, for, uh, motion to, uh.
The agenda.
The agenda.
Yeah, we did that.
Okay, sorry. I was looking for Dan.
I know, don't worry.
That would be a test.
You were correct, not Charlie.
Yeah, let me know when I get this.
May I have a motion from somebody in the advisory committee to accept the agenda?
So move.
Go move, like, second.
Thank you, okay. Just, you're welcome.
Ms. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ferguson?
Aye.
Mr. DeCosimo?
Aye.
Mr. McWiggin?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, all right, so now we are at, well, welcome, advisory, well. Yes, Article four, so the first item on our agenda, Article four fiscal year twenty twenty-six, general fund operating budget. They don't have a meeting until we have lovely omnibus presentation. Everything that we're doing, what's happening, some changes. And then we'll give Nancy extra credit or whoever did this on graphics, it's lovely.
I might have.
It was more whispered than I put it together.
My back and honor. And then we'll prep this, I think, uh, this is a great presentation, hopefully, the beginning of it, obviously, online. Please.
So we've had all our budget hearings, the board has had their hearings, the advisory board has had their hearings. All the part has been, it had been heard. What we presented to you is a balanced budget, we're gonna go over some of the changes that have occurred since we last presented to you. We had a modicum of good news when the government's budget came out where we received some money, uh, but just to give you an idea of what's going on in the greater area. Doc Spray is asking for a five plus million dollar override for this year. Knowles is gonna be in the four million dollar range, Anno within the three and a half million dollar range. Those about confirmed to me that they will be asking for overrides. And then Andrew did some work. Whitman has a two point two million dollar budget deficit, or asset, school or a million tubes by themselves. Alphax two and a half, Hanson two point nine, hanging schools are cutting, so this is not unique to us, we've made some adjustments in this budget as you're aware. But again, we did have some good news, so we'll go through what the changes look like going forward. We improve the budget, so the good news is we are not pending any overrides, things are good. Financial forecast revised, we ended up with three hundred thirty-seven thousand eight hundred seventy dollars in additional revenue between the government's budget, other changes. Fixed costs netted out twenty-one thousand dollars more, so that's a negative twenty-one thousand. Even us three hundred sixteen thousand dollars in additional revenue from when we started the budget. And that's a portion of the school department, two hundred ten change, a hundred and sixty change to the town. So we went, looked, uh, Nancy and I met, we went through what we had before us, we talked to the chair. We knew we had the money back in IT, that first one was wired, we could make some contracts that came in. Second one was we wanted to try to stay on our five-year replacement plan. Same with facilities. DPW, we went back into the seasonal salaries, that is really a front-facing thing that we do, although it's small money. People do see it, they do a lot of cleaning, a lot of churn, things like that, so we put more money back in there. Josh is doing an outstanding job as our veterans' agent, so he's picking up more clients, we want to put some money back in that. We gave some money back to the library. Put the beautification back to what they had asked for, which is the best two thousand dollars we could possibly dispense, we gave that back to them. And then we put the other man into contractual bargaining, which we have reduced quite a bit in order to get the budget in line, which brings us to a hundred and six thousand dollars. Six sixty-one. Right, so you'll notice, we'll get to it later too, um, in the budget, we cut two police cruisers for next year. That's in the budget reconciliation at the special town meeting, we're gonna get those cruisers this year since we cut them for next year. That will keep them on the cruise replacement schedule, so we did not restore it in next year's budget, people got funded relevant, uh, special issue. So those are the amendments to the budget. We would all the budget, I have, if questions on that, I can answer those, obviously. We spent a lot of time, we eliminated the position of, uh, Director of Planning, has been eliminated, a position in Nancy's office has been eliminated. The hot time public affairs person has been eliminated.
Zoning enforcement person.
Zoning enforcement person that we had has been eliminated, so empty positions that we had that were important, that we wanted to fill, really with the need to reduce the budget, didn't seem to make sense, that we were gonna cut some of ourselves. Really kind of the bottom. That position, Director of Planning, was a great position, we haven't been able to fill it for over two years to find the right person. People were facing, didn't seem to get it right, we had a twenty thousand dollars in the budget, and had to cut some of this stuff, so. That's where we have the budget, everything else remains, and those are what we put back. Yeah, if you have specific questions, happy to answer them.
Any questions here on?
I have no questions, I just want to really commend Nancy and Jim, um, for, you know, all of our peers have thrown up their hands and done an override this year, and yeah, I think it's made some tough choices this year. But that we can, you know, go to the town without having an override this year is quite, quite exceptional, so thank you. Well, and I'd like to say that I'm sure not everyone in town understands, but there are two types of override, one is a debt exclusion and one is an operating, um, override. And what everyone is talking about, an operating overrides, which they last forever. They're not debt exclusions where they drop off at twenty or thirty years, or it's unusually significant, um, public buildings, especially schools and by private police. So this is, this is quite an accomplishment, and I thank you. I, I, I'm sorry for all the other towns, all that you're going through, but, um, we're lucky this year. And I understand that next year, next year is always looming, but I appreciate that this year.
And if, if the fixed costs continue the way they're going, which obligations are, they will, they're gonna eat up. Most of them are gonna break a certain record before the wedding, so we will be in a difficult position next year. Uh, I know it's my philosophy, it's Nancy's philosophy, that this is what's philosophy, before you go ask the townspeople to put up more money. We need to make sure that we show we've made many changes in how we do business to save money, that type of a one later on tonight. Before we go back and say, hey, just give us more money, let's be doing, so.
Well, I, I want to reiterate in the reinforced parent's words, uh, today happens to be the anniversary of nineteen thirty-three Franklin Delano Roosevelt's famous statement, we have nothing but fear but fear itself. And, um, yeah, next year is gonna be even a bigger challenge, but I believe your professionalism, I commend you for your detail work and your state attitude. And I appreciate the kind of budget we have this year, and I think we can all thank Friday for that as a community. And anybody that sees you on the street should thank you for that, and I commend you. Thank you.
Yeah, again, there's fourteen, just in the South Shore, fourteen committees are about to vote about for operational overrides, which again does not, shows it's not, all fourteen are not fiscally irresponsible, there's a layer systematic issue at play. Uh, so thank you, yeah. Uh, advisory, any questions, concerns, comments?
Thank you, it's not an operational override.
All right.
Is there anyone on the, it's hard to see them, um, yeah, there are.
Yeah, any hands?
For advisory?
Seth, do you see anyone putting their hand, hand up or anyone?
Uh, Mr. Goodrich, right now you have no hands raised.
All right. So we need, we need to vote on, uh, this motion. Good, a lot of motion.
I move to incorporate the town administrator's proposed amendment to one hundred and six thousand sixty-one dollars previously submitted, this will twenty twenty-six general fund operating budget.
Ms. Cantil, second, by Ms. Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous.
Do we want to?
Oh, yeah, just.
No, they're gonna be voting on Thursday.
Okay.
Oh.
They just want to have two minutes.
This is a vision, I love this.
You're welcome to vote tonight, anyway, save the time.
Well, I, I thought about it, but we're not posted, so we can operate.
All right, all right.
Sorry.
Okay, special time meeting, articles.
The next recommendation for the board, though, in the annual special time meeting, um, the big savings every, savings every that this year is with the four hundred thousand dollars that goes to Sewall, so I want to do some budget. Same thing as last year, uh, the board last year voted to restore that money using two hundred thousand dollars sold and two hundred thousand dollars win. So before we go any further, we'll put that before you, see if you'd like to do that again, as you can see, the balances are still fairly healthy. Not we did this much longer, but it is important that we try to keep some of that money, particularly to see what kind of case we need that to move quickly on something, so, uh, I recommend that the board vote again to do that, to spend those two hundred thousand dollars on those two accounts, uh, for the months we see.
And that, and that funding, those numbers, that's where, so we'll go down to eight hundred thousand and five hundred thousand, and then at the end of the year, remember. Okay, just wanted to make sure, yes.
Well, that was part of my question is, um, what is expected revenue from the wind turbine? Or what has been running a hundred?
Yeah, a hundred to two hundred.
Yeah.
Was ahead of that until we put the year on.
Right, but it's not.
But then I would share that, so.
Around.
And what's, and what solar rate, roughly?
It's probably more on two fifty.
About two fifty?
Yeah, because we also have the, um, arrangement with Social Bochech, we may buy use some of our credits.
I'm picking up the assessment.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, so I think we, I can't remember whether it was the solar array or the wind turbine that we've got, part of the revenues dedicated towards, was the middle school, the debt reducing the debt on the middle school.
It was never voted, if financial forecast was doing it, they discontinued doing it last year.
Okay, so we have no real obligations for either of those sources revenue. And especially, we don't own the wind turbine, so it breaks down, that's his problem, correct?
Correct.
And we don't own the solar array, so that breaks down, that's their problem. So, um, I think it's, it's, it's a good amount of money in both of those accounts to have them, with no obligations on, on those. Thank you.
Do you have questions, comments?
No, I think it's appropriate, uh, we need to support the roads to Sewalls, if, if we can do it, let's do it.
I hope you have promised.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Anyone provide, there's no hands up, advisory questions?
No.
Frank, give you a nice, smooth meeting for Thursday, nice and easy, just do it right. All right, take a motion.
I move to incorporate the town administrator's proposed, just, oh, wrong motion, sorry.
No.
There you go.
I move to restore the four hundred thousand dollar roads to Sewall's budget line in the F twenty twenty-six budget by using the two hundred thousand from the solar array revolving funds and two hundred thousand dollars from the wind turbine revolving.
Ms. Conley, second, by, second, Dr. Gilmore, all those in favor, aye? Those unanimous.
So I made two recommended changes in two of our advice funds, uh, the store department, we had a little bit better contract on a sledge cake. Saving, uh, a few bucks, so again, back to what we call the front face of duties, we turn, restoring their seasonal help, and restoring seasonal salaries also in the water department, savings on short-term interest. Reminder, the store department, store recommendation will require a store increase three to four percent. The water department budget as recommended does not require the increase. Uh, there was one position, store plant operator, defunded, water plant, sorry, water plant operator, defunded, uh, budget. It's emptied, we made some changes before, where we made two assistant superintendents, uh, the water department syndicate. They would like that position back when we do transition from the new plant. Uh, but we thought that we could give a year without having to raise rates at all, especially the position that's not filled right now, we took that position out, so. Uh, what we've recommended restoring, you have those seasonal employees that do all the little things around town that might not be important in the grand scheme of things, but that things, we really noticed around town, so that's why I'm recommending restore. Excuse me, nine thousand in store and ten thousand in the water for seasonal salaries.
Both in, just for folks that don't know, a lot of that is either, I think, other sewer, someone splitting those grades or the water, just those in summer, either your forestment or just other, other small things that kind of pop up. Just right, we have the most activity. Questions?
Good.
Advisory looks happy. All right, take a motion.
The town administrator's proposed adjustment to the previous submitted, this will twenty twenty-six monitoring sewer enterprise on operating budgets to allow proceeds to market.
Uh, moved by Ms. Cantil, second by? Saracen, all those in favor? Aye, it's unanimous.
Great. So we had a potential adjustment on the capital budget, uh, planned, I do not recommend the two hundred thousand dollars in INI for the store department. Uh, we have applied for a Green Communities grant to cover the cost of the HVAC project at the store plant. We notified today that we did not get that grant. That is kind of a important piece of work that we need to get out of there, if you've told the plant, you've seen their HVAC system, it's kind of a back pain advantage system, so this is really something we need to do. So at this point, I would not recommend putting the money into the INI. Uh, come back in the fall, let's see if we have, we can do it, otherwise, if the board wanted to restore that, it would lead to additional freight tank pressures for next year.
I have my normal question. Will we be ready? When we're ready for North, for North Citrus, like, will we have enough capacity? That's my.
That's, that's the goal, and again, the big pickup, Susan, we, we need about a hundred, a hundred twenty-five thousand gallons.
Yeah.
We picked up ten or fifteen just on that Egypt Beach project, which was a big one. Again, the big pickup we're gonna get in ninety-nine is the new water treatment plant. Because it's a zero discharge plant, we discharge between forty and fifty thousand gallons a day from our current plant into the sewer system. So that's about half of what we need, and then time out just about right for the city, so, uh, we're running those numbers, I think, and it will be good.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, in seven hundred and eleven days.
Who made that up?
No, we looked once, and I don't remember.
No, I just keep.
It's in the seven numbers. So HVAC first in the fall.
HVAC, they do have INI, they're doing INI projects.
In actual.
Quiet, there's no plant, I don't remember, plant the office.
That'd be painful and a happy chat.
All right.
So it's possible that we could, um, put both of those back into the budget at, at all, special time meeting, after the retainers are certified, or you're just saying it's probably just gonna be the HVAC.
HVAC is, like, we're still in the capital budget now.
Yeah.
Left that in, so that's gonna be voted on now, it'll be the INI if we have enough, we can do it in the fall.
Okay.
But we're gonna do the, uh, the air conditioning hopefully for the summertime.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I have one other question. Was there a reason why we didn't get the grant?
It's just tremendously competitive right now.
It's competitive.
It's hugely competitive, more towns are going for great communities, so there's more towns buying plus money. We're gonna apply again, and the next month is basically starting right away.
Yeah.
But all these policies are very competitive, more people looking for less money, more people looking for more money and.
Thank you. Good luck.
Advisory questions? Who else? All right.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want to conclude your hearing on the general, on the budget.
The, uh, well, we don't have to vote on that, that was my first question, we don't have to vote on.
There's no one we can, I'm not changing.
Uh. Yeah, so we think, yeah, we can, so that means.
At least, do you want to adjourn your meeting, and then you guys can stay and just watch the rest of the presentations, if anyone wants to listen to parents? You won't be actively participating in your thick meeting votes, okay?
All right, I have a motion to adjourn the advisory committee.
So move.
Uh, Ms. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Ferguson? Mr. DeCosimo?
Aye.
Mr. McWiggin?
Aye.
You are adjourned.
This. Technically working, all right.
I'm gonna do it.
All right, next. Discussing vote, annual town meeting presentation, you have the planning, planning board.
Uh, we're still, we're still on special.
Uh, we gotta do the article.
You thought we were at the seven thirty again.
You're still twenty-two minutes.
Yeah, trying.
That's bad luck to save her.
I feel slow.
No, that's okay.
No.
Let's go through these articles.
Article one here, is unpaid bills from prior fiscal years, we don't know that, that's just a accumulation of bills that people didn't put in time of, that's committed by the powers. You have a breakdown in your bracket, your budget reconciliations, five hundred thousand, couple of the big ones in there, uh, two police cruisers plus some, just like, working at police department. So hundred eighty-five thousand dollars to finish the high school locker room project that came in, high bid. Eighty-five thousand dollars for windows warden and additional golf courses, all cocks, sorry. And then there's thirty-five thousand for, uh, legal budget. Legal budget has been packed this year with the MBCA Communities Law and the ADU Law, that the legal has been doing quite a bit of work. Lot of it in Wal Council, so those bills are quite, I'd expect, so those are the big ones. Uh, but again, there is a complete breakout of where the money is coming from, where it's going. That's all, two, Article three is pre- community preservation. You had, Jan Fennelly, and last week we looked at that for you. Fairness traditional upper interest, that's not applicable. Middle school reimbursement, not applicable, uh, I was on a phone call with the state. On the, uh, Gate School, the old middle school, ten days ago. They had lots of forms we needed to sign, those were all signed, we actually had some information, that's been all sent in. So it looks like we are on the road to hopefully finally closing a bit of school project. Sure, that's the one, I'm just, I hang it off for a while, because this, this feels all summer, where I'm getting lost, so those are all unsettled. So we will move forward, hopefully get that all done, last month or so. Recession of bar authority, just like Governor Credit Card, you shouldn't have all these uh, bar out there, we should, should rescind them at different times, the big one for the town, six point three million dollars for Amaracuatime. That project does not belong to over nine million dollars, so we've had discussions with water department, we guess three million dollars a year for water main replacement. Let's try to add there. Two Amaracan sections, maybe take a million to a million dollars with a pipe at Amaracan, be a couple of years to sort of get it done, uh, but that's a good project. The good thing for us is that's, uh, my shields of water doesn't affect the problem. I have a problem over, so. The other one is one that was passed, uh, but it went out. It was improvements in the vote tech, you've now approved the exclusives.
Correct, uh, questions, comments, Sussin?
Was it looks, any questions from the public now, what about Article seven? Yeah, the last one, the last of the seven, it says seven million on the screen, it's actually five million, uh. This is an article that we believe we just need to pass and have, as we called when we were talking to the residents, uh, see the point about appropriating money to fix that Sewall, we had two million dollar authorization that had passed in two thousand fifteen that we were able to grab and do that work. We have some things coming up, we have some potential permits that may eventually get approved, or else we have projects that need work, we've got this long list up, that we do like to have an authorization available, so we can go to funds, we do not have any plan right now to issue any of this yet. Both Nancy, Matty, and Kevin, they believe that it is important that we have something available, just in case, so having it there, uh, I don't expect anything to happen. We need to do it, I would, I got my snowball fixed, it's not gonna smell again, so, uh, that's what this is, it's kind of a belt suspense, is to have an authorization available. If and when something happens, we'll be getting grabs on. You want anything on that?
Um, the only other thing we use it for is when we apply for grants, we have, we have our share, so like the teach nourishment brands have a fairly large share. So we think it's competitive, we always use that till the authorization, and this year said it took ten years to actually apply for profit.
Yes, sorry, yeah.
But we've already taken care of whatever repairs need to be done, or there are new way down.
We have history contract, we have funds, that's the two million dollars that we already had authorized, so that's, that work is started with down and out.
So I just want to be sure people understand that by rescinding this, we're not affecting.
This is an addition, this is not a decision, this is an additional.
Okay.
I'm just, I know.
But the other decisions have nothing to do with it, yeah.
People might think.
Yes, yeah, I understand.
That somehow rather, so just to be clear. Thank you. Remind me, so we, we voted that we're going to do when we have to pick the vote text book, we'll be, we'll be coming back for those funds to the front of town, we don't have the.
No, we did, board voted for the debt exclusion on the balance this, this.
Right.
So.
Without a number.
There is no number on a debt exclusion, it's whatever the cost is, it's out of.
All right. Okay, so the eighteen million, nineteen million upwards, per twenty-one?
That was for repairs, and then they got accepted in the MSBA program.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Remember, I asked, why do you just have the kids do all the business?
Ever tell them?
Other question?
I agree.
Who's first?
Any recisions, yeah, no, all those. Lot of motion.
I move to include Articles one through six for the April fourteen twenty twenty-five special town meeting, the special town meeting consent agenda. Hold on.
Go ahead, if you want to take a second, I have a separate question.
Okay, move faster, Dr. Gilmore, second, by? Cantil?
I didn't put Article seven in the consent agenda, I assumed you want to talk about it, if you don't want to talk about it, I leave you in this motion, I just didn't want to be presumptive.
Well, I think we should add Article seven, it's common sense, it's something.
People can always say, oh, oh, right, because it's not like.
So amend my, my, uh, motion to include Article seven, yeah, that's, like, if you get FEMA money, you can use it, so, yeah, okay.
So the amendment's been amended, and seconded by, uh, Ms. Cantil, all those in favor, by, it's unanimous. All right, so, Article seven. All right, so Article seven. All right. All in consensus. Recommendation. And Article silence.
So, Mr. Chair, the Article, um, recommendation, I didn't know how you wanted to, um. Take your vote on Article three, because C P C still has to vote on the tenth. I didn't want, I didn't want to take it as a separate vote, but take it as contingent on C P C's, um, recommendation. Because the base hasn't been voted by now.
Remember that?
It's sixty-nine thousand for the special.
Oh, it's a little.
Yeah, they won't take that vote, vote, uh, cancel. I mean, don't you want to come back to this in the eleventh, or if you just want to take it, you know, the recommendation?
Well, um, that one up for the board. Yeah, nothing else to, uh, but.
We're just voting, put it on the board, and then maybe go to the weather that I hear.
Next, next slide.
Next slide.
This would do Article one through two and four through seven.
Guys, this, this is now the annual town?
Yes.
No, this is still a special, we're still on.
Special pass.
Oh, yeah.
Now you're in your recommendations.
All right, so we can recommend all the three. Article five, Article three.
Next week.
Next week, correct.
Yeah.
All right, are we comfortable with that? We'll recommend.
I'm comfortable with it.
You know what we're, what we're doing?
Yeah, sure.
Sort of, so we're gonna recommend all the articles except for.
Three.
We're gonna withhold three, yeah.
All right, I'll take a motion.
Move to include Article one, two, four, five, six, and seven. Of the April fourteen special town meeting and a special town meeting consent agenda.
Yep.
From the downtown.
Oh, to recommend, sorry. Move to in, recommend Articles one, two, four, five, six, seven.
As shown.
As shown, special town meeting, April fourteen, twenty twenty-five.
By Ms. Harris, second. Seconded by, you go on. All those in favor? Bye.
I have a nick.
All right, so we're recommending all, we already did.
Yes.
All the three.
And we're gonna talk about three next week.
That right.
When we have all the information from C P C.
Why is this special town meeting?
Because, uh, we can't continue with the design on base without C P C funds. So like we did with the White House, we had tons of the special and other construction, now we have the annual.
All right. Good. Now I just, thank you.
So people at home, especially we can spend it that way.
Right.
We have to wait for the state.
Right. We just sort of the talk, we'll back and forth. Consent agenda, yeah.
Yes.
Special town meeting. Yeah, yes.
These are just.
It's more for timing, they're gonna use specials to be, it's not correct.
And these are just potential assignments, normally the chair takes.
All right, by the special, would you like? So you already have position to just be taking those. Nothing would love to jump up and talk about them. Actually, Mr. Gilmore last time, is that?
You do, you, man, you do.
I think anything that makes it go faster.
Sure. So I'll, I'll take it.
Make it more efficient.
All right.
That's how you really do it, that's going really.
Let's get you up the, uh, theories.
Bless you, exactly.
We'll turn up the monitor, we can remember stuff.
All right. We are now officially. Twenty-four minutes, uh, there, Bill?
This will be drove as comfortably, planning board to give you their presentation on their articles.
In the meantime. We'll do, uh, I'm gonna talk to the irrigation pod.
Um, Ian's taking my, um, zoom in.
He's not here.
No. It's too early?
Uh, he's not.
Yeah. Oh, I'll see.
We can approve some meetings, that's, while we wait for, uh.
On their way.
All right, move to through.
We don't need it.
We don't have it.
Yeah.
That was last. There.
There, come here.
Ready for us right now?
Yeah.
I don't know how they run things over there, but we are ready. We are ready to go.
Oh, darling. You're right on schedule.
Yes.
Hello.
All right, take a breath. Lots to go through. Set the warrior. All right, let's talk. Talk ADUs. Push the mind agenda.
All right, so. Here's the chair of the planning board, Patty Hammer, the vice chair, Rebecca Lillard, and myself, so.
We will be just like you.
This is our.
Show and tell.
Perfect.
The Affordable Homes Act, signed in August of two thousand and four, allows ADUs by right without owner occupancy. If the dwelling is less than fifty percent of gross floor area of the primary dwelling or nine hundred square feet, whichever is less. The Affordable Housing Act is about producing ADUs as means of a permanent housing situation. The state feels ADUs can be constructed less expensively and will help the state's housing order. This remains to be seen, but the town, town situated needs a bylaw complying with state and company ultimately to get. Protect the town situated in its residence.
So we have a work being diligently researched, the law went into effect in August. Uh, to construct a new bylaw that confides with the current state law and incorporates provisions of the current zoning bylaw. That will work for our residents. The act does allow the banning of short-term rentals in ADUs in a loss of cycling review. And the regulations led me to look at two-two, one-two, twenty-five. The bylaw still has to be reviewed, that we have a work being through with Town Council. And Town Council has been involved in this review since last August. And what the planning board is presenting to Town Me still has some unanswered questions, as Town Council has been unsuccessful. Be connected with Attorney General's office. Regardless, a bylaw needs to be passed for optimal town, optimal town control over ADUs. And to that end, the planning board proposes accessory dwelling unit by law provided to the select and advisory boards tonight. And we do have four sessions, public hearings, we listen to the public, we listen to department heads and all other boards, and that is starting to bylaw.
So just a quick rundown of the bylaw. Uh, we're deleting, um, the current definition of accessory dwelling in gross floor area because they don't match with, uh, the state definitions. We're adding a definition, um, of accessory dwelling unit, and we're clarifying it with attached, detached, large and within. Um, we're adding several other definitions. Um, the accessory dwelling large is something that the planning board felt strongly that this allows for. Accessory dwelling units by special permit only between nine hundred square feet and forty percent of the gross floor area of the house. That's something we currently allow, and we thought that it marks the town situated. We wanted to keep that in the bylaw. We have a definition of protected use ADU because the state defines. ADUs now going to be protected under the best general law, section forty-eight, section three, much like, um, a Dover amendment. So they, they are protected use, and if it meets it, you can't, you have to re, you have to approve it. But we can require cycle and review, which we are requiring, and we are saying no short-term rentals. ADUs cannot be used for short-term rentals, which the law says that we can do.
But why?
Pardon?
But why?
Because this, because the state is requesting that we have permanent housing. So, eh, um, a short-term rental or a weekend or a week is not, that's, that's not state intent, so it's not gonna be our intent.
All right, the state doesn't sell us. Let's, let's finish with the whole thing, and then we'll definitely, we'll definitely get back to the short term.
I mean, so, I mean, we're, we're putting the site plan review, we're putting in, um, no short-term rentals. We are putting in some stuff that, um, Town Council has told us to keep in here for now, keep site plan review in. But the, the law says it, the regulations seem to imply maybe something that we can't have it, but. Town Council finds, yes, you can. Um, and so we have, we have requirements, just like we have in the regular, in the bylaw now, we have requirements for these accessory dwellings.
So it's too big, yes, and we, we're gonna get to the short term.
I want to ask a procedural question.
Okay.
So whatever we do with this town meeting. If it turns out that it needs to be fixed in any way, we can do it special, eh, we can do it in the law.
Oh, no, no, we want to pass a bylaw.
I'm not, I'm not saying.
We have no bylaw.
Right. If we pass a bylaw at this town meeting.
Yeah.
And it turns out that something needs to be tweaked, or something, that, would we get the regulations and something isn't.
We have the regulations, it's just that it's the interpretation of the regulations. Town Council has not been able to get in touch with the A G's office because we've got a probably every town around here trying to ask the same question to the A G's office. So.
And what I'm trying to say is, I don't want us to not pass this because someone's got an issue with some word here or some.
Right.
I, I want people to come to town meeting with the, the positive attitude that we, we're under an obligation to do this. But that if a mistake is made or an omission happens, that it's not, it's, this is not all written in stone.
Right.
But it's like any bylaw.
And we're hoping, you know, you're hoping by the time this comes up, yeah, Town Council will have finally been able to reach the two of yours. We have to go to a webinar next week on, on how to, we're gonna how to implement the.
Right, and model by law. Model by law, but I mean, so Town Council is still gonna be trying in between the time the warrant goes to print. Or if, if it, if they get a hold of the Attorney General's office before the warrant goes to print, then we may be able to clarify certain things now. Otherwise, we, you know, may have to do it later.
Yeah, the, the, the pump is just to make sure that if we need to make tweaks, we can tweak it. A year down, two years down.
There's no reason not to do this now.
That's correct.
In years, every week, so to do it now, because if we don't, then we are under the A G's of the state, which is very.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Jake, sorry, I just want to mention a little bit of everything. All right, Jamie, sure, so the two things that we can, that the law allows us to. Change or implement would be short-term rentals and then also, um. Site plan review, so. But also the definition of, of a, uh, kitchen. Okay, well, I'll let you ask that. All right, do you want to talk about short-term rentals and? Whatever you want to talk. Yeah, 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 please, yeah. So why, why, why would you restrict short-term rental?
We're not restricting it, the state is restricting it.
Well, no, you're, you're actually including it, so you're, you're restricting it, why?
We're only restricting short-term rentals.
Why?
I can just answer that. I said that.
Remind me that, please, remind me, that's okay.
First of all, one of our board members lives in an area that has all, um, short-term rentals, so. We've listened to her, we've listened to other people in the public. First of all, a lot of people don't like this, um, new bylaw anyway. Um, some people love it, but short-term rentals are gonna change the whole area of, you know, a, um, street. You could have every single person on the street can pretty much have an ADU now. And I don't think the, right? Man, thanks, what, what?
My, 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 my face is, if you're gonna interpret, we're interpreting the state law, which is standing and voted now. The state law does not restrict short-term.
It says we can restrict.
But it doesn't.
Right.
It, it, the equal to that is, we're going to restrict short-term, it doesn't.
Just kidding.
So the fact of the matter is, if somebody wants to have somebody to spend two weeks at, 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 at an ADU. A family member coming in perhaps for a wedding or whatever, and the one in that we have is full, we can't do that under your restriction. And the state law is only to improve housing, increase, improve housing in the state. So why would we want to say that you, we, we want to improve housing, but we also want to respect how you can administer your housing?
So, Mr. Gilmore, there are other state regulations that oversee short-term rentals. I don't have the right part of it, but there are certain pieces that do. So what is that, we listen to the public, and those people do not want short-term rentals in the neighborhood, and our job is to recommend to the board what our voting public wants to hear. And that is the overwhelming consensus, as it is for the governor, that she wants to create permanent housing. She does not see short-term rentals as regulated.
For ADUs. For ADUs. Just for ADUs.
Just for ADUs. So you can live in your ADU and rent your house, we have no control over that, but ADUs cannot be used for short-term.
You can live in your.
You can live in your ADU and rent your house.
It's only for the ADUs.
Only for the ADU, we cannot regulate the primary residence. So the primary residence can still be.
Short-term.
Yeah, short-term.
So there again is this conundrum, why we are, why are we restricting the flexibility of that? Why are you restricting that? Because, because that's discriminatory, quite frankly. I don't, I don't agree with that at all, Chairman.
Well, the other, the other option that we didn't tell you is, these don't have to be owner occupied now either.
That's true, which is even more to the point where I'm going with this. Why are you restricting something that really we should, if anything, we should try and live within the spirit of the law as written by the state? And then if we find it to be cumbersome, cumbersome or some awkwardness, or I can't imagine why, uh, right now, but if we find that. We can't live that way, like we said earlier, another year from now, perhaps then that change could occur with legitimate, not a discriminatory thought process, so.
It, it probably makes a difference, so, like I said, when we read the Affordable Homes Act, it is for permanent housing, and they have legislated that ADUs are for permanent housing. So that's, that's, that, and that's my, and I've kind of swooped into that, kind of wedded to that unfortunately right now. We've been killing this for six months, so it's, it, it's not that, um, it, like I said, we spoke to people who are definitely affected by this, it's three years of town. And, and they do not want to see their community torn, we can, hold down, basically, huh?
Maybe.
I, I, I have to comment respectfully, Mr. Gilmore, I think that planning board has intended a question very articulately. The entire purpose, the ADU act, that we have to react to is to create more permanent housing for the residents of this town. It is not to address, uh, our particular community shortage of short-term rentals. Um, I have one, and, and, and the other key is, they, we know our community and you've done your homework. And, uh, my question about, um, it, it in here refers to the best general law about short-term rentals. What, what is the definite, what, what's the timeframe?
Thirty-one days.
So minimum is thirty-one days, right, okay.
Uh, and that's why we have, that's why we haven't written that way.
Because they changed it.
Because it says, uh, chapter sixty-four G, section one, and thirty-one days.
Yeah.
And thirty-one days appears to be occupancy part of the definition in that, that statute.
Quite frankly, I would love for all housing units in the community to have that restriction, which many communities do have, so that's a whole. That's a, that's a, we're something out of the songs. We don't, we can't address that today, um, this is a mandate required by the state. You guys have done your homework, they were the publiceering in February, where people were able to bring in, uh, their comments, and I commend you for listening to everybody. But, um, yeah, I mean, not providing that provision compromises the, the, the character of our communities. And doesn't address the issue we've been tasked with addressing. So I respectfully disagree, agree, and think that this is a very, uh, unfortunate.
Be, um. I mean, you're, you're all mature. Somebody else had it here. Sure, I, well, I just lost my breath now, so I'll let you go.
Well, I just lost my breath, so I'll let you go.
So, um, Linda Ferguson fifty-seven came to us by speaking as a resident who has attended these, um, planning board meetings. And, um, I can speak to you, something else later, she wants to ask me, but this is as a resident. Um, and it's a couple of things. One, the intent of this law that was passed at the state level was to provide for, for long-term housing for aging adults. I know it was your parents, um, or our parents. Uh, but adult grown children.
Thank you.
Adult grown children who can't afford to live in this community. To allow them to be rented out as a Airbnb defeats that purpose. And, and for those of you in rubber, if you're Airbnb or VRBO, there are tons listed in situ, tons. What happens is, and we, we get phone calls, my business get phone calls. Um, they can rent them out September through May or June, but then these people are asked to leave because during the summer, they can get a month's worth of rent for one week. So it doesn't become long-term year-round housing if we allow the Airbnb. I also think that, um, to your point, Jamie, where you said, well, that's where I didn't allow, and then change it. I believe that whenever you pass something, it's my own personal opinion, you have to think about the worst-case scenario. Write it for that, and then once it's in place, if you decide you want to change it, you can. But to sit here and envision like my street with an ADU and everyone's backyard, and there's no requirement that the owner live on that property, you are basically having, you know, uh, Cape Cod cottages all up and down your streets, and you lose that, that residential character. And you also have a big drain on, you know, all the, um, uh, surface that we have. Um, and then finally, something else, oh, and the town does not have the manpower to enforce the registration of Airbnbs as it is. To allow them to add more, I mean, the town will reap the benefit of an Airbnb interest, you know, um, uh, tax payment. If it's registered, we don't have the ability or the manpower to track that down. And then to suddenly allow everybody in town to put their ADUs in and maybe rent it for two weeks out of the year, town council sees those, those taxes, but we can't go around and impose. So that's just my, why you're saying that the planning board has done an excellent job, and they really did listen to everybody um, that was at this meeting, and there were very few people wanting to see, um, uh, these allowed Airbnb's.
Chair?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Linda, appreciate your input. Um, two things, um, in your statement. And I think it has been a perception of the town, and I asked when I was at your public meeting, were some report back of what is, what is the potential? Because obviously, an ADU has to fit within the setbacks of the, uh, primary property by right. Knowing that, and knowing that we have an up to set nine hundred and fifty square foot facility that's going to be located within said property, how many properties in this town can actually have an ADU that's not incorporated within the building itself? How many? I asked for that because I, I wanted to spell the fact that every property, every neighborhood, every house up the street, as you said, can have an ADU, because I don't think that's the case.
My guess. If there's like eight houses in New Manhattan, that are eight.
But I, I'm looking at the entire town.
So, Mr. Gilmore, I, I, can I answer that? So, Mr. Gilmore, where we looked at where this would be most feasible is where there's sewer. Because, how about the plot second, that's another whole kettle of worms. So when we looked at that, um, we were specifically at the lighthouse, legitimately, where you live into a middle, I call those the letter streets, and the avenues. And there are not a lot of those houses that are over five thousand square feet, so there would not be a, a ton, which people see you there. And I'm glad that you brought up that it has to be within our bylaw, because the governor always says by right, she never, she always forgets the important part, it must be your goal was to be by law, she never says that part aloud, which is the really important part that we have to say. So, um, I think they want twenty characters and twenty-two thousand units across the state, this here, in, in five years.
And, and, I'm sorry.
Twenty-two thousand units in five years, is that what she's looking for, two hundred and twenty thousand?
Yeah, two hundred.
Two hundred and twenty thousand divided by four thirty-one, it's like ten. It, it's not a lot, we move it how much it is. But the issue is just that we have a lot of illegal ADUs, so we try to bring those into compliance as well.
Can I, uh, we did not calculate how many parcels in town would be able to do it because it depends on the setbacks, it depends on sewer or septic. There's a, a lot of variable things that go into this. If you can fit it on your lot as an attached or detached, then, then you can fit it. But it, it would be too much, too hard to figure out how many actual parcels in town can do it. We, I mean, we know.
So this incapacity to figure that out is what is, pardon me, I didn't mean to interrupt you. But, uh, the incapacity to be able to figure it out due to the complexity is also allowing the other side of the conversation to say, this is going to be, every, every property in town is going to have an ADU, and it's going to be on every street, it's going to be up and down the street. That's the problem here. And I, I would rather just say, let's neutralize both of those, both of those sides and leave it to you guys, as this is adopted, to justify when that happens. At the same point, I wasn't discussing, haven't referred to any of this short-term as Airbnb. That's a different kettle of worms to me.
No, it's not. If you rent out your property for less than thirty-one days, you have to register with the state. Whether you put it on Airbnb or VRBO, it doesn't matter, but if you're renting your property out for less than thirty-one day time period, you were supposed to be registering with the state and paying four percent town tax and five percent, five point seven percent state tax. But there's no, nobody in town is watching that, nobody in town is doing that. And, and just to be clear to me, I didn't say every house in this town can do it, but I can assure you, I believe that my neighborhood could have an ADU everything, which is why I said, when you write a bylaw, you should write it for the worst-case scenario. The worst-case scenario is, I could have eighty homes with eighty ADUs in there and nobody living there year-round, nobody. So, that, I, I believe the, the way that it's written is in the best interest of situat, uh, today. And then let's see, how many people apply for the ADUs? Maybe only two apply. And, you know what, maybe you do open it up to, to a short-term rental. I call it Airbnb because that's everybody knows that.
I understand. The, so I'll say, I'm, first of all, this is a great conversation. All public policies, only thing, I've said this a million times, the only thing we can do is talk. Have a conversation, it's the only thing we have to do. I don't, I don't make anything up there, just talking. And this is a great conversation, this is really about the future of the town. And first of all, thank you for the work that you've done. Jamie, I, it's, it's, I love this conversation because it does, it brings to me, you know, the two different, two different kind of forces, right? I own my own apartment, I don't want the town telling me what I can do, I want to build an ADU if I want to be short-term or not. I understand that impulse. Um, but I also understand, and I try to understand the spirit of the law. So I went back to see what Governor DeWitt said at our press conference. Uh, and there's specific mention of Cape Cod and the islands and what's happened for short-term rentals. And there's the point made explicitly when this bill was signed, um, how important it is for coastal communities to be able to have that power. Because, here's the worst part of it all, for all, for listening to me speaking, for some of these that you've had to deal with, whether it's MBTA, ADU, or the new single-family, see this one with the single-family zoning ban. Um, this, this is all public policy by fiat for the whole place, for the whole state. And now we've got to deal with that, and it doesn't fit each community, and we're trying to pick up the pieces.
One size does not fit all, and that's a really high message to get through.
One size, absolutely. Um, which makes all this very, very difficult. And you're right, the enforcement is not there. Uh, and so I tried to look and find what do short-term rentals do, where ADUs, other states have done this, and the results are very, very mixed. There are some places with ADUs with short-term rentals, drastically rose the price, because what happens? It becomes a commodity. You don't, you don't buy a, you don't buy a wealthy house, you buy the low-income house. And they come in, and then they rent that out because it's cheaper, they get the rent, now no one's living there. And then you actually make it more expensive in the town. That's what happened in Nantucket. The whole, it's, it's. Luckily, we've become more comfortable being imperfect, because this is very imperfect. But I do, I, I understand the impulse, that I want to be able, because the other argument is, sorry, I didn't, didn't, is some folks say, the only way I can afford to live here is if I can rent this thing out as an Airbnb. So I understand, that's actually the strongest argument. It's well, hey, I can't live here anymore unless I can actually rent this, this EDU out. Problem is, good luck trying to finance it, because the value of it is so terrible as well, it's a whole other issue.
And you can rent them out.
Yeah, it's not, we're just talking short-term rentals.
Right, for short-term.
Rent it out, you rent it out for two months over the summer, and then rent it to somebody else.
What's the difference? I mean, that's really the argument, it's a real difference.
You make more money in two weeks than it's worth with the whole year.
With the whole year.
And it also does affect the neighborhoods. You don't have somebody living there. Yeah, you can, you can go down to, is it Ocean Street?
Ocean.
Ocean, there's a lot of Airbnbs, and, and those, there's nobody else living there because those are all Airbnbs. But, yeah, by getting rid of them, people can do whatever they want, so.
Yeah. No, I feel, um, it's, I mean, it's not where I live in towns, but you definitely have to listen to the folks that live there in the neighborhood. Um, and when I was on zoning board, it was the same thing, the folks that came in uh, in those areas that had a lot of Airbnbs.
This is the most volatile zone kind of, we've got a pass since forty.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And it's, it's, I don't, we don't know exactly, but we do know for a fact, some neighborhoods will be impacted more than others.
Yes.
And I think that we have to listen to the people in those neighborhoods. But that's my, my thought. And I, I agree, it's not perfect, but I thought, I think that we've done a, a really excellent job with imperfection, making it work best for this town.
Please, but when we say that, it's not because of.
I mean, the whole situation.
The situation you're trying to deal with.
But I think we've done a commendable.
Yeah. I think, yeah, it's, it's like an all or nothing, which is.
And, and we've done a commendable job with the spirit of the law and trying to truly increase housing.
I mean, housing is, we don't have enough rental housing overall.
It's true.
So it doesn't go in that, we, we don't have enough rental housing.
Yeah, I know.
And it, all right, and if, again, as you said, in a year from now, two years from now, say, wait a minute, there aren't too many. All right, maybe short-term rental might be the best way to get some extra income, get some.
But I mean, I will also say there are, and when they mentioned Cape and Islands, I mean, Nantucket and Providence Town are paying people to subsidizing people to make their homes from year-round homes. So they're like, they have programs where people will get ten, twenty thousand dollars annually subsidized from the town to make a long-term rental, they so much don't have, thousands of them. We don't want to go back.
We, we, historically, since we started accessory dwellings, we have approximately a hundred and thirty-six, um, accessory, legal accessory, well. We have a, we have a lot of, um, illegal ones, um, et cetera. But, and there's a lot of, we have two hundred and sixty short-term rentals that are listed in the town. But we know that there's more of those as well, so, I mean, historically, ADUs have worked in the town of Situate, and we are getting applications for ADUs. I, you're gonna, you're gonna see more applications for ADUs.
Yes.
I mean, the sad thing is when you have to explain to somebody that, you know, they have a eleven-hundred-square-foot house, they might want a, you know, thousand-square-foot ADU that they can't have it because it's too big, it, their house doesn't justify that size ADU. And then, of course, how it's going to fit on their yard if they're on a septic system, because they have to accommodate for the septic water.
So the septic is the issue.
Yeah, that's, that's the worst issue. One more question.
Sure.
If my word, um, if you think, um, one of the biggest issues is that the state is not requiring local occupancy on the property. Is there any chance that the state is going to change that, or is that just, you know?
It doesn't seem to be happening at all. No, and we have made that comment more than once, as I can, as I've observed in town, so.
Do you have another question, or a kitchen question?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think we've talked out the, uh, the, uh, short-term issue as far as we can. So, I, I have a couple of other ones, if the chairman, if you want to.
Please.
Do that. Uh, in your definition of cooking kitchen facility, I'd like to take out but not limited to.
Where is that?
It's in your definitions. Because you really, to have a, a cooking facility, a kitchen, you need to have all of these items. And that makes it inconsistent to, to have that, including but not limited to. I hate that in any contract clause, for anything. In construction, in purchasing, if, if that's going to be removed, you've got to have it all, otherwise, what have you got? And then lastly, the other thing I had is, just a silly question. There's a caveat in here, uh, uh, under site plan review, uh, letter L. If I don't understand, if, if you've got a, uh, by right, I know you're by right, and already approved with the zoning, your primary residence, that already has gone through this review, and you have all your shrubs and everything, and your screenings and everything already approved for that property, that you also now want to be able to go back in and say, now you have to actually add more because you're going to add an ADU?
We do that now.
Why do you do that now?
Protect your neighbors, usually.
If it's already been approved, if, if the entire site, the primary site is already.
We don't approve individual houses specifically, we don't do that, that's a building issue.
I, I said the entire site.
Yeah.
Has already, the primary residence has already been approved.
We don't do that.
We don't do that, plenty doesn't do that, that's a building issue.
Building issue, but why is it in here then?
Because we have encountered this in the past, when angry residents will come and say, how are you going to protect us? Um, from the, from, say, you have a two-story ADU, you have a garage below, and you have the ADU above. You know, you're looking into my backyard now, can't, can't you do something to help protect us? Well, so, the planning board might ask for a fence or some, some landscaping to try to help.
Even though the primary property that already, already has all of that.
No, the primary property may not have it. This is an extension of a use.
This is so common in, in zoning, I mean. I have a couple of theories.
Those are all my remarks. Whether it's common or not. I just don't understand why you, why you have, should be able to go back in and redesign the perimeter of a property.
We're not redesigning the perimeter.
You're, you're saying you have the right to.
We, we're saying we may ask for some additional screenings or fences.
Saying you have the right to, yes.
Yes.
So if you're like on a, um, like, like one of the letter streets, both houses are very close together, if you want to put a, a small ADU there, uh, we have one on Mobile Lab, we've had several at the lighthouse, they're very close. So people, I mean, literally, they're just close, well, you know, can you plant a tree so you're not moving in my bedroom? So it's not, we don't approve an original house, but an ADU which is an accessory to the primary dwelling, you would like to have, could take, we may to have control over that. It's for the neighbors.
And it's applied to us, too. Senior center would, you know, make sure.
I like him, we added it.
Okay, like, I can't, he has definitions.
Everybody, point those trees.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta do it in the water treatment plant.
We do.
Right?
We do, yes, we do. That's a great example.
The water treatment plant's the best example.
Yes, we have a.
Well, you got it with the trees on, make sure.
A screen is going to be there.
And your school is going to be so thick.
And the school, I have the new school. No, and I, but I appreciate, because you want to be home.
But what a tree, that's not, that's, that's like, basically, that's, that's new construction of an entire property next to a, a neighbor. This is a neighbor just adding an ADU within their property, which is already a building.
A new structure, it's a new structure. Yes, it's like a, a, a super shack.
It's a, it's a new dwelling, it's a new dwelling unit, and so, we're trying to protect everybody and, and give them some rights. I mean, we, we very rarely ask for additional landscaping. Sometimes we suggest, could, could you put shades on the window, you know, could you put planters on a balcony or something? And, you know, it's, it just depends on how intense. And, you know, it's, it just depends on how intensely the neighbors complain.
Fair enough. That's all I have.
What's your, your question? Alright, we're good, we're good.
It will be a spirited discussion, I'm sure.
It's great, no, this is, I mean.
It always is, so it's your property.
Well, rezoning especially.
Yeah, it always is. It should be.
About, for a million dollar houses now, right? It's a lot of money, it's your own property, you wanna make sure you maximize.
And we'll see what happens to a dog's new car, so they're not charging us three hundred fifty thousand dollars right now to build a nine hundred square foot, you know, come along about twenty five percent, I can't even.
Right, so I get it, and so, and we should, we should have that, it's to the future, the time that, where do we want? Where do we want, where's, it's all, it's a great conversation, so don't, I mean, thank you for, we're thanking for the questions. Yeah, right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice weekend long.
Really good.
Thank you. We're still on time.
We are.
Representation by Law Review Committee report on proposed bylaw changes.
You're up.
I do know, I'm, I'm, I came and I said in everything, I'm Mr. Marcy, Chairman of the Bylaw Review Committee. Uh, in way of my report, we have been reviewing all of the proposed bylaw changes that have been on the town board. We have three recent ones that we just got from town council. We have a meeting planned before town meeting, so we should be all set and getting them all done and reviewed via to the town here, is that what you wanted, or my?
So, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, because, you know, for ADUs, a number of questions came up on some of the proposed bylaws that required input from folks outside of the bylaw review. So those, that, that input is being gathered so that they can review it, and, um, the, the language for ADUs hadn't been finalized, so that'll be taken up at the next meeting.
We have the fishing, new proposal, the fishing bylaw, the, uh, ADU of interest discussed, and the abandoned maintenance of abandoned vacant building, those are the three remaining to be reviewed.
And then, I have a question on our side, so I know, um, our town councils look at, the accessory dwelling, have, they, the town councils all look at the other two?
Yes.
And given comments, okay.
Yes.
So we're on schedule, is the message?
Yes, thank you.
Any negative comment? Any issues or problems or anything?
The abandoned property will be going back to its third reading by bylaw review.
Okay.
Um, and I spoke to, um, town council about the concerns that came out of the second reading, and his opinion was he did not wanna make any further changes.
Okay.
He wanted it to stay as it was, and that's what, um, bylaw review will be discussing on the, um, waterways commission change to the, um, right to fish.
Uh huh.
Bylaw review reviewed it, it went back to waterways commission. Um, they sent up another draft, the original draft had already been looked at by town council, we had your comments.
Okay, great.
And their changes were just kinda answering questions, been taking out, uh, one little clause.
Okay, perfect, thanks for the update. Great.
Alrights. Now, they put public comments on the bylaws.
Um, they, for which one?
ADUs.
The ADU one, they did take public comments, right?
Good, they're three meetings.
Three, the planning board had three meetings, and I think they also took written public comments, if I'm not mistaken.
I was just asking if you guys.
Oh, if we are, oh, sorry.
Oh.
In general, if someone wants to make a statement.
Sure, if you'd like to make a statement.
Just putting back a trip ski, New York, when, I'm actually with an eight sixty one Main Street, going along that one. But I've been, I've been planning more, maybe for the ADU stuff, and do you happen to know if town council ever got hold of the attorney general's office? It is not reviewing this, that's not yet. Um, they just, state's not getting back to anybody on this, but it's my understanding, I've been to plenty of meetings on this, that the ADUs are not supposed to be treated stricter than what the town would require for a single family dwelling. So, what's being proposed is either ADUs as a matter of right, or what the planning board is doing is allowing ADUs also that are above what the state standard would be, which would be larger units and things like that, by special permit. Which, in my opinion, when they're by special permit, they can ask for anything they want. They can ask for screening, they can ask for all the things that Mr. Gilmore was asking about. But I think specifically, town council needs to figure out whether the AG's office is gonna allow a bylaw that will require stricter requirements for an ADU than they require for a single family dwelling. We don't require a site plan review for a single family dwelling, so.
And, and that's only the larger.
No.
Right.
That, that, in my, in my, only my opinion, if it's something by special permit, planning board can allow it and put conditions on it. But the only condition I think that's supposed to be on these ADUs is that they have one parking space if they're more than half a mile away from the train station.
Or site plan review is explicitly written in there as something for, and short term rentals to, or that's in a legislative.
Yeah.
Alright, right, Jim, right, those are the two.
Yeah, and council reviewed that, and he believes that what the planning board has is legal. It's fine that they can do what is in the bylaw right now with their proposal.
My, my take would just be great to hear from the attorney general's office before it makes it to town meeting floor. Otherwise, what's gonna happen is, if it does get through, it's something that doesn't pass the straight face test, it's, they're gonna have to rely on individuals to come forward and sue the town to try to get a permit on an individual basis. And I would just hope that you would support, if the AG's office disagrees, have the bylaw be changed.
I would, I would support the state getting back to us on many things.
Yeah.
That's not the only point.
And I have been told that they were talking to the town's legislature before the closing of public hearing, and they never did.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrights. Now we are on to the annual town meeting.
Line nine.
So back. Now, this sheet, I have this little, uh, I wanna call it a cheat sheet.
It's an assignment sheet.
Assignment sheets or the, uh, next.
There it is.
I helped you.
Is it in my, oh, there it is.
And our backup, it's page.
They're gonna miss it so much.
We do have that ability, we have three votes.
We have.
Three votes. One, two, fifteen, and then this.
Well, almost every place on the consent agenda, anyway.
Yeah, at the beginning, yeah.
Very good. Well, special time, the annual time gains, number three and four are not on the consent agenda for obvious reasons. Number twelve is not on the consent agenda.
Um, it could be.
It could be.
It could be.
Four could be. I think the board has listed that in the past.
The sale and lease of the portion they all gave school.
No, that can't be.
It's on the bylaw.
Do you know, right to fish, no?
No. On the, on the zoning bylaw, ADUs, that is usually handled by the planning board itself. They, you know, the description and the, they stand up there and take the heat, and that's tough stuff.
Yeah.
You know, but, but on a party, as I depart, I would like to do the last time community preservation.
It's yours.
Thank you. That's.
Jim, did you wanna go throw this a quick, or did you wanna just?
We just, I feel like we just.
Yeah, we've gone through them all, so if there's anything else you wanted to add, where else should we start signing?
No, I mean, most of the, the consent agenda stuff has got, has got, has had the general, I'll be. Nearly the month we've, uh, they have to find the house. You are feeling straightforward, so.
Yeah.
Somebody could always put a whole.
Oh, yeah, it's been a while, okay.
So, yeah, so let's do, we're gonna assign them, so obviously, CPC.
Yep.
For sure. Uh, just can't build anything that is.
Um, I would be, well, that's.
Well, it'd be your first round draft pick.
Um.
Okay.
Chair, do you wanna finish with your consent agenda, what you wanna put on it before you get to your assignments, or?
I agree with all of everything you highlighted.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, well, just.
All pretty straightforward. Did you wanna do?
I want me to want to do, since this is your last.
I would, I might have my swan song, uh, I'll be.
Okay.
Okay.
So you'll do gates, now let's, so skipping around here. Alright. So you'll do gates. Alright.
Just the charity, usually do the operating budget.
Alright, so all the operation.
The state of the town.
And capital plan.
Usually we have somebody else to.
Yeah.
Or I'll, I'll, because we disagree with the capital plan.
I am, I don't, I don't mind doing it if you wanna.
You have a couple items on the capital budget.
That we recommend it, so.
That was passed.
Although, I mean, we're also gonna talk. To monitor your bylaw, let's actually talk, Susan, she did a fish. I'll do right to fish, I'll do parking, too.
Alright, Jamie, you need something, I'll do capital plan if you want me to. Alright, Gilmore is on capital.
And what are you doing this week?
Uh, right to fish, and I also said I've been marking.
I can do sidewalks, and so, we're looking on that, huh?
Alright.
Where's, oh, where's parking?
Twenty one and twenty two sidewalk.
Oh, yeah.
And then, uh, abandoned.
Brown.
Okay, do that, yeah.
Karen, abandoned buildings.
I feel very gosh.
Yeah.
Okay, what we got left?
Bylaws?
Zoning.
So that's gonna be planning, but are we gonna say something?
I'm happy to say something, or you want.
We make the motion.
Yeah, okay.
You wanna make the motion?
Yeah, you make a comment. And then they do the.
And then, what do we got left? Four shore is the only white one left.
That's up in the, in the special counter, that's up the chair, we're gonna do the next.
Oh, yes.
But we had agreed to put that in the consent.
Yeah, that's in consent. But we still need to assign them.
Still need to assign.
I'm trying every single one just in case someone holds it, right.
Alright, so compensation and boards, and reported boards. I'll, I'll do that. Uh, waterways, Susan's doing that.
Yes.
On, on, on the additional four shore, that takes a two thirds vote, does that mean it really can't be on your consent agenda?
Yeah, okay.
Can be, okay, Bill's consent agenda, okay, so.
Okay.
So he'll ask to vote, it's not unanimous, then pull that out.
Got it.
Then they're gonna do more like the state now.
You mean with a lack of transparency?
Did I?
Just saying.
With Gilmore, you're getting the.
Sure, we'll have to do that one.
Sure. Golf course is good for me. And wastewater, even better. Well, it's not, they're gonna stay. Transfer station, that's Harrison.
Okay.
Water Enterprise, sure, I'll take it. Stabilization fund excise levy, Ms. Conley will not give anything. Revolving fund limits, Ms. Canfield, will have the consent. Do you wanna do the recisions?
Yeah.
Alright, so that's Conley again.
That goes with.
Number, number fifteen, mass general law, chapter ninety one liability. That looks like you.
A lot ways.
Harrison.
Great, me.
I love that one. Jamie, how about revolving funds?
What, which type number is that?
Seventeen, it's yours.
Okay.
And local acceptance, just Canfield loves local acceptances.
Okay.
Then we still, when we're discussing, we're done.
Well, now we have to do the consent. So.
But we have read on it.
No, we haven't technically voted.
Oh, we haven't voted, yeah.
So everything that's in.
Tan.
Tan on our little list.
Very tangible.
So people at home know, for the consent, we were talking about compensation of elected officials, reports of boards and committees, waterways, golf course, wastewater, transfer station, water, enterprise budgets. Stables, stabilization fund excise levy, revolving fund, uh, community preservation, rescissions, just the rescissions are gonna be, the actual community reserve is gonna be.
On the consent agenda, but, yeah, that needs questions.
Mass general law ninety one liability, uh, revolving funds, and a local acceptance of the mass general law, those are all the consents.
Motion to accept as offered.
And for Mr. Gilmore, seconded by Ms. Conley, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Alright.
Alright. Health insurance. Alright, did we miss, what did I miss? Alright, I'm all, I know, I'm all over the place.
Uh, we didn't do your recommendations.
Didn't you?
Didn't you?
Capital plan in FY twenty six general fund operating, but I move to recommend articles three and four as shown in the annual town meeting warrant.
Is that him?
Moving, Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Harrison.
And you need the first one, too, those were the ones that you just voted onto the consent, you haven't voted your recommendation on them yet.
Oh.
He's further, and she's gonna further move.
I did came to further move that we accept the recommendations for placing the following particles on the consent agenda for the annual town.
No, we just recommend those.
Number one, yeah, just the recommended one, two.
We recommend the order.
I felt we did that.
Hey, you put them on the consent agenda.
Consent, now this.
So now, they put them on the consent, now you gotta say to the like. I know.
I move to recommend articles one, two, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, fifteen, seventeen, and twenty as shown in the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
That's been moved, that is seconded by Mr. Gilmore, all of them in favor. Alright, it is unanimous, they are all recommended.
Do you wanna hold on the third motion until your next meeting because of being held at the stand?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh. So then we get to the zoning. I didn't know if you wanted to vote them separately, or if you just wanted to vote them all.
Uh, we'll do this separately. Alright. So, the motion for the.
I move to recommend article eighteen, is that the ADU, and that is the amendment, no. Not eighteen.
Eighteen?
No, eighteen.
No, that's right to fifteen.
Right, fifteen, sorry.
Sixteen.
Uh, sixteen, sorry, I move article sixteen, which is a zoning bylaw amendment for ADUs. Um, to recommend, sorry, I move to recommend article sixteen, which is a zoning bylaw amendment, ADUs as written, seven.
So, just, so with no confusion, this is if you support or don't support ADU.
As written, article sixteen as written.
Moved by Ms. Harrison, seconded by Ms.
But do I understand that they might be coming back with something?
I thought they were, because I had asked them to take the.
Do I?
But not including kitchen definition, they didn't.
I saw they agreed to do that.
But I haven't seen it come back.
Well.
Do you wanna just do it at the next meeting?
I would just be sure.
Okay, okay.
Annual attorney general by that.
Well, that's what I was sort of, my, and then, Ms.
And I don't have to say no tonight, so that's good.
That's your chair.
Yes.
Um, so, I would also, I would like to, uh, when is the bylaw review committee meeting?
Right now is twenty, of this month.
Twenty, oh, so we're gonna meet before that.
You're gonna meet before that, and the warrant will be public, and the project committee will be ready to go.
Okay, so we don't, we will be able to wait for that.
No.
We won't.
You won't be.
But they, the bylaw did do, you did parking fine, sidewalk betterments already, and recommended them, okay.
And so, right, you finished.
No, they haven't.
They're.
No, that's still.
They're on your second reading.
Oh, I thought they did the first reading. Okay, you're right.
So, did, listen, I'm comfortable moving forward, and I know, cause the timing, it's gonna be too late.
Right.
We're not gonna want anything between now and next meeting on the abandoned vacant building.
I'd love to recommend article nineteen as shown in the annual town meeting warrant.
Right, move, as, Canfield, seconded by.
Second.
It's Harrison. Again, this is for the abandoned vacant building bylaw, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, but unanimous. Most do have a motion for number six, this is both the parking fine and the sidewalk. Betterments.
Which is article twenty-one and article twenty-two. Parking fine, that's by law.
Parking fine, yeah, so this is the.
I move to recommend twenty-one and twenty-two as shown in the annual town meeting warrant.
Moving on Ms. Harrison, seconded by Mr. Gilmore. All those in favor?
Aye. So.
Yes.
So. On the abandoned buildings, there was some language that bylaw review wanted to get clarification from, we have council. And will probably result in a couple of tweaks that they would recommend. If we've approved it as written. Will that, those recommendations have to be put on the floor as. Will, will somebody have to pose an amendment on the floor?
I thought Jim said the town council does wanna make a change.
If you wanna make me, town council do not wanna make any.
Oh, I'm happy, okay.
We've already written, we've already voted, yeah.
Right, what I'm saying is that there's kind of body reviewing it, and if there was a legit thing that they recommended that we. Have the ability to get their input on, we'd have to do it on the floor. Okay. This one we look to profit. A level profit.
So you weren't holding on fish until the next meeting?
ADUs were holding.
ADUs were holding, I don't see fish out there.
So we can, do we can.
Hold the fish, right.
Do you wanna hold? I mean, my point was, I only wanted to know if our attorney looked at it, and Jim said yes, and they didn't have any comments, so I'm good with it, as long as they.
Was, that one, there was, that's what I was thinking, has some tweaks to it.
What?
Which are being revised.
It was revised, it's gone out of the. Is there a chance that bylaw review can meet before the twentieth? Before your next meeting?
Cause our meeting is, you know, eleven. Right?
Correct.
Yes, next, next meeting.
Yes, you don't have to, they don't have to meet before, it's not, it's not.
Not by.
No.
In one, so you have to post. Two days in the middle.
So, question four is. It's not gonna, it's not gonna change me now, no.
Or if it needs to be changed.
We're talking about.
Article on the floor.
Okay, could be.
Our, so our legal counsel looked at.
Our counsel looked at it, and there was the language that. Uh, they didn't say was, they didn't reject the, the request from bylaw.
Counsel had no rec, no recommendations on the fish. Bylaw review had issues with it, it went back to waterways, they've come back with edits. Which is now in a second reading of bylaw review at their meeting on the twentieth. The abandoned vacant building, the issues that bylaw review had, went back to town council, town council said, don't, don't do it. And that's going back for a third reading in the twentieth of bylaw review.
So that might.
Kind of instrumental, where the, where the, I'll just ask, the, what were the comments? If you don't mind, with the, on the right to fish that part.
I'm gonna have to ask Nancy's stuff, cause I was not in, in until the last meetings.
I, I think the, the issues with the right to fish were reasonable, we didn't, we couldn't figure out if, um, the way it was written, if it was adding a second set. A separate section, or it was replacing, and then there was some, a, a, a sentence that did not make grammatical sense.
Actually, these are, these, this is not instrumental to the.
No, no.
Queens, what I call queen.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's just language, it's not.
Yeah, and the answer was, it was a new section, that was easier, and.
Where did the, where did it enter?
The stuff that didn't make any sense got deleted.
Right, so the intent has not changed.
So. Alright. Take a motion.
Or Michelle.
Move, move to recommend article eighteen, which is the amend the general bylaws, section. Three zero nine one two, right to commercial fish.
Sarah's sentence, I'm Mr. Gilmore, all in favor, unanimous.
And I believe there's one article that has skipped around in here that hasn't been voted, and then article fourteen, it's not on the consent, and it's not on this slide.
The old gates.
Okay, unanimous.
I can do that. I move to recommend article fourteen, which is the sale lease of a portion of Old Gate's intermediate school for housing.
Second. You're going to be Sarah's second, and Mr. Gilmore, all in favor?
Aye.
Spoiler alert, those, uh, proposals are coming out tomorrow.
No, I can't wait.
Yes.
Well, if you.
Fingers crossed, people.
I. I'd like to tell everyone. We're not voting on a lease for the gate school, or the disvisious disposition of the gate school at this meeting, we're simply voting to allow select court. The authority to do so, whether or not we get a proposal, but I, if, if, it was just.
Go clarify with me.
People might say, whoa, 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 so just, for everyone at home, this is just allowing.
Very good. Everybody, all three people.
The point board. God love them. Bless them.
I'm just leaving the, the, the two books out.
Nicely done.
Wind says.
I know, I'm finding my purpose.
Look, it's very important.
Yeah, because that is very important, it's clarification.
Okay.
Right, let's keep scrolling, let's, before, you know, it starts running off.
Yeah, snap that.
Yeah, bro.
You mean a motion?
Alright. Nancy. Employee committee, plan, design changes.
So, um. We've been looking at this a little while, potential changes, I don't know, insurance carrier, not Blue Cross, but it's gonna be prior. We had early discussions, we started looking, Maya was telling us to ten percent increase for the next fiscal year, uh, we had conversations, uh, Mayflower group, which, they were saying they were committed five. So we had preliminary discussions with our unions, Will Grant used to have our amps.
Yep.
amps unit, professional managers, yeah, and we had preliminary discussions with them about what was happening, what was going on, about making a switch to. Mayflower municipal health group, we helped those early, because we had Mayflower know who were coming. So the employee insurance committee voted ninety-two, so they switched to the Mayflower health group from Maya. We then had a wait. Till the actual rate projections for next year come out, which they have, uh, Mayflower has voted a seven percent in this hearing committee, increase for next year. I sent you last week, uh, Meyer rate, which was seventeen point four four percent. So now that we have those, we need to put the other packet, which is being done, but the board has to take a vote to actually enter into the P E C, chapter, section twenty-one, twenty-three agreement. And then we start the actual formal process of looking at plans, looking at savings, I'm gonna agree with the union. Getting that signed and done, so once this is done, I have to notify the unions of, what plan design changes are, they really are, when the benchmark plan, most of our, reasons are not the benchmark plans. Those plans are identical going forward, the benchmark plans do have some differences in coverage. It did not talk about the health, I don't discuss, so all this is, is for the board to vote to enter into the twenty-one, twenty-three process. Notifications will go out tomorrow, the next day, there's an I C meeting, and then we're actually in the P E C process, uh, we'll come up and agree with the unions, how to change. The good thing is, it's blue cross to blue cross. Coverage again is identical for most of the employees, they're pretty close to identical, so they won't see a change in their benefits, but they will see. Significant reduction in what they were expecting, or what we were expecting, uh, increases, so, I'm just asking the board tonight to vote to. Institute to twenty-one, twenty-three process, uh, thirty-two big sections, twenty-one, twenty-three, and then we'll get it to our P E C meetings with the unions and get it done.
Ask me, yes.
Questions, comments, concerns, I'll just, I'll say, I'll say, any hometown employees. We've been looking at this for a while, been called, it's always been to ensure that coverage is the same, we never want any coverage differences. Only looking for cost, we wanna make sure that, you know, the plans aren't. We're not going from, you know, the platinum plan to the bronze plan, and want everyone to be the same, and just make sure the, it's the middleman. That we're trying to change, and the middleman can save us money, which will help everyone in town over the, over the long run. Uh, we're sure that is the, I feel comfortable saying I can speak for the board that we want, our town employees get well covered, have the best plan for, for the best dollar, so.
The employees also asked that we would offer a high deductible plan as part of this, which we have said we will, we will offer, that won't be required, it'll be a choice of people. And that, to be honest with you, that's for young employees or really healthy.
And that's their own financial decision.
That'll be their decision, that's correct, we're not forcing anybody to switch into that plan, that's not.
You guys don't listen?
The difference. Between Mayflower and.
So there is two major reasons. Maya, even though we're in a large group, we are still rated individually, our high names come out, but if we happen to really bad year. We go up more than Maya midpoint, was fourteen and change, or seventeen.
The town itself gets.
Town itself gets rated, whereas Mayflower rates as a entire group, so if you have some people having really good years, uh, they help you out. The municipal help, uh, Mayflower group also has a trust fund, uh, and they're using some of the funds from the trust fund to buy down the rate form, I believe, nine to seven. So really the big difference is how they rate the plans, I don't know if you don't agree with that, but that's the big difference, if we're having a really bad year, you pay for online, because we're rated in.
No, they have a big trust fund.
Uh, put it down, Mayflower, it was thirty-something million, thirty and change.
Just, that can come, go.
Yeah. Yep, and that was, that was part of discussion, but, uh, you know, we had long discussions with that consultant, we had long discussions with the Mayflower consultant. We'll basically tell them that it's gonna happen, health insurance in two years, you're gonna make a lot, a lot of money. And it just is unclear at this point, but, uh, we're, we're pretty confident that we'll get multiple years out of this. Plans approved with their money, we'll get what that, I can't tell you what's gonna happen in healthcare. The administration's got, we have to fill the care act. So, that happens, what is that gonna do to insurance, the insurance market right now? It's ten percent going forward, per year, and medications on twelve or thirteen percent.
We're having, doing a, a research for the different overrides. Our good friends in Plymouth, if I get this wrong, I think it was just electricity costs and healthcare alone, that's all. They couldn't, they couldn't, right, they couldn't make it on those two items, so they're, an override just for electricity. And the increase in healthcare costs.
It's new, they're all terrible.
Feel terrible.
When they announced the seventeen at the M M A with all the towns there, you would have thought everyone was. Like, the entire group. And most people were saying, no, they don't, they had a budget, but they are budgeted like that.
That was, uh, that was what they given us early. You know, I figured ten percent.
Yeah.
The range is nine point nine to nineteen point nine.
Yeah.
So some people actually, the highest pieces of weed.
Yeah.
Plymouth, Plymouth's on their own for health insurance, I'm not sure how big they are, whether they're statistically right to be on their own, but. We're, we're not big enough to be on our, we would be, we would be crushed up.
It's, um, but like you said, it's good for the employees, which is what we want, we want what's good for the town and what's good for the employees, and I think this has been. A long time coming, researching this, and thinking about it, and it's the right time for the town and the employees.
Yeah. We love our employees.
And we did get a letter, we did get a letter.
Yeah, a letter from Mr. Pyram.
From, from, who's there, and I didn't know if they wanted to say.
So there's one more thing, the G X C, which has always been benchmark, the G X C, less than special, the G X C, G X C's ten. So.
And then with G X.
The coverage is not when.
They're proud, come on.
No one else.
Okay.
Thank, thank you for the invitation to see, and for the opportunity to be here, uh, William Branton, uh, assistant at S C I U, eight-eight-eight, uh, local amps, uh, traffic president. Um, very much appreciate, uh, everyone in the room, and everyone that couldn't be here in the room tonight for their efforts in helping us find this option. Um, especially hearing the dramatic, uh, projected increase for Maya, uh, this does appear to be the best option for the bottom line for our, for our members. Um, you know, that, that being said, I, I, I am here to ask the, the impossible ask. Um, even, even a cent, seventy percent increase, especially for our members on the family plan, probably feels untenable to them at this time, in light of everything else that's going on with our economy. Um, if there's any ways a town can explore, um, a, a, a greater share of the buyback fee that is a requirement in order to rejoin the Mayflower or health insurance group. It'd be deeply appreciated, um, I understand if, if, uh, you know, a commitment or discussion can't be held at this time, but. I just want to express the, the difficult spot that a lot of people are in right now, so, again, thank you for helping us mitigate these costs, and, and looking forward to, to working out the details.
Well, that, the I A C, uh, part of the discussions had asked, we could be on a more frequent basis to discuss potential changes, things we could do. Uh, we said, absolutely, whatever you want, we're, we're happy to, but, uh, the issue with plan design changes that save money, usually in the coverage is not as good. You're doing something less than coverage, but, uh, well, the world to work with the employees, get the insurance too, so. We'll, in the next, I'll see if we can come up with ways to, to save some of our life for employees.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, well, I. I can't tell how many times I've talked to people about how, like, how much, I know we all care, you think about. electricity bill's going up, gas bill's going, I mean. And we love, I, I mean that sincerely, how important our town employees are, and how difficult. I'm, again, I'm even more worried about the next couple of years, this year's been tough, it's next year that, that I'm worried about. So I can promise you, we're gonna do everything we can to find every dollar, because I. It, it worries me, the future of the town, make sure the best employees move forward, so yes, we will do. Everything we can, because it's, we can't function without. I mean, quite literally. Well. Keep looking. So thank you, it looks like, can't wait to work together. Motion, please.
Move that slide board vote to utilize the process for mass general law, chapter thirty-two, D, section twenty-one and twenty-three, public employee committee for plan design changes, plan design changes.
Move, Canfield, seconded by, Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes. Right, the Barco builders.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Ian is on the air, so.
Oh. Yeah, how are you? What's that with the lower pond to the irrigation pond in this connection?
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Goodrich, forgive me, which one, uh, is it, are we looking, Ian?
Ian, Ian Kelly.
Yep, you got it, one moment here. Mr. Kelly, Mr. Kelly, you should be good to go.
Howdy.
How are you?
Standing by the woodshed, good.
Alright, let's talk about this irrigation pond, what, what's happening here?
So. So essentially, when they built the golf course in ninety-seven, they built the golf course with an irrigation pond that only holds about. Two and a half million gallons, three million gallons, when an average irrigation pond holds about sixteen, fifteen million gallons, so, um. It's not very deep, it dries up all the time, hence our typical water issues, basically, we draw from the other pond every year for about four weeks. Um, during, you know, serious drought situations, so instead of renting a pipe every. Um, during, you know, serious drought situations, so instead of renting a pipe every year for about twenty thousand dollars. Um, every single year, and then having me and the staff go out and lay the pipe down, connect it, then take it down four weeks later. We were just, essentially just making a permanent solution, digging underground, four feet to the frost line, and they're gonna be connecting, um, some. I forget the exact, um, pipe parameters, but, um, about eight inch pipe going across. And then we will, uh, get our own pump to pump it in when we need it, instead of just using it for the four week rental that we would have it, so. Essentially just like a long-term solution to what we already currently do every season, um, it just saves us, it'll save us quite a bit of money, and, in the long run, and. We get to use it whenever we need it and not use it, um, all the time, so just here and there, whenever we would need it.
Oh, yeah, I mean, saving, saving money, uh, in the long term, it was sixty-five thousand, right?
Yeah, we basically spend about twenty to twenty-two thousand a year.
When you take the water out, how many of Jim's title is the fine?
Uh, you know what I mean, I get curtains.
He doesn't play that.
I listed too expensive.
There you go, right, um, questions, comments, it's pretty, moving.
Just one question.
Of course.
Why the difference in the bids?
Um, a couple of them were just like, yeah, whatever bids, one of them was, uh, you know, I'll build my summer house, they give it as bid, but you had three bids that were fairly close together. So a couple of them were just, you know, bids that, oh, we'll put it in, we get it.
Great.
Yeah.
You know, when I originally quoted, when I originally quoted the project, I got a couple quotes just to see if we were gonna be over that fifty thousand threshold, and both quotes were around sixty grand. So I was expecting sixty to ninety, and then when we saw three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, I figured, wow, that's something.
They're, they're basically companies that are too busy.
They were large or something.
Well, they're, they're too busy to do the work, but if you gave them the bid at that price, they'd find it.
I, well, I like.
Yeah, I do, more than you.
Yeah.
Please.
I like the sixty-five.
I like spending the sixty-five, all right, we'll take, we'll take a motion.
On the floodboard work contract, twenty-five WW, oh, two park of builders out of C, C, sixty-five thousand dollars for connection with lower pounds of irrigation pond, and we have spot off.
So, Miss Cantill seconded by, Mr. Harrison, all those in favor? Aye, unanimous. There's new business, other business. You guys are the A's.
Thank you all, real quick, we're planning to open the golf course on the twenty-eighth, weather pending.
Good.
Oh, awesome.
Perfect.
You're really better.
Now people could only put their rocks on the leashes, huh?
Dog walkers have until the sixteenth.
That was my rant the other day, I was out there, people walking their dogs, not on leashes, one gentleman was actually playing with his dogs on one of the greens.
Oh, my God.
Um, so, you walk up to the golf course, with your dog on a leash, please stay out of the green, especially now where it's getting a little warm.
Oh, yeah.
So we may need our office are out there walking the crisscross, right?
I do enough damage to the course without people.
Yes.
On the greens.
True.
All right, thank you.
All right, I have to observe that I am sure the golfers do a lot more damage to the greens than the dogs would ever do.
Yes.
I have said that, people are supposed to have their dogs on leash, but they do have these long leashes, so, but, but the point being, it's, it's a golf.
If you turn up the greens this time of year, though, it doesn't really grow back, if you do it during the golf season, it's probably.
Depends on what the judicial are, but, yeah, so I, I. Don't want dogs taking all the blame.
Oh, no, I take plenty of blame.
It's, it's not the dogs, it's, it's the dog owners.
People with their perkin. It's the owners.
It's the owners, not the dog, yeah.
You are correct, yes.
Was true.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You never know.
All right. Liaison report, let's go.
Uh, just to remind everyone, if you have golf, you can get the library foundation fundraiser, you can get a mini golf inside the library, not, not this Saturday, next Saturday, you'll drive, sorry. No, no perkins.
I did it last year, it came.
Husband on, honey. It's a really good event, and the next day is this, is it this Saturday?
Last year.
It's this Saturday, and it's the adults at night, unless Monday is the kid.
Saturday.
Monday is the kid, and it's really cool, so that's going on, and then.
Are you doing it?
I did it last year.
Who's doing it?
I did it last year, I don't.
All right.
The, um, the bike commission is planning another slow roll, but in May, so you'll know more about that.
Thanks.
Awesome.
What else?
Oh, yeah. I have, um.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Sister City Committee from West Cork, couple of things to, uh, events coming up, the, uh, item one is two thousand twenty-five Ford Film Festival. Of the city with Sister City Project, taking place once a month from February through April, the doors open at six P M, the film starts at six thirty, the next up. Is the film Kate Verde, Kate Verde is a legacy of service, that Thursday, March sixth, this week, six P M to nine P M at the senior center. And then the next film is, uh, next week, uh, it's April tenth, the Irish film, it's called The Commitments, which will be shown Thursday, April tenth, six P M to nine P M at the senior center. Also, back into March, on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, the West Cork Sister City affiliate, the South Shore Irish Heritage Trail. Is hosting a celebration of the trail at the Tinker Sun in Norwell, from six P M to nine P M, suggested donation is thirty dollars, twenty dollars for students. And seniors, and come enjoy amazing appetites at the cat bar and the music of a true Irish section, check the website, it's South Shore Irish Heritage Trail for those detailed.
Fabulous, rain barrels, get your rain barrels, it is the least expensive.
I'm gonna get a no pop.
Uh.
Do it.
Usually they're forty dollars less, the rain barrel, I have a Congress, but other.
Yeah, I've got, I have two, when I got last year, the rain barrels.
Great.
They work that. There's guns.
I have none, I'm comparing, I will allude to a, uh, an email that was sent to me by, uh, one of our staff about the, uh. Uh, the business enterprise here that's concerned that we're not considering menu placements from restaurant to restaurant, we're awarding a restaurant to approval. Um, and I submit that you guys should read it, and then take it into consideration. Um, I don't know what our rights are to do that type fixing, um, but, uh, might be easier to just fix the menu. But that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Generally, you can take competition into account for a packaged stall license.
Right.
The board can make a finding that the area is always, or she's too nervous. And only get another one put on a color big license.
Yeah.
Generally, no, but.
Yeah, kind of what I thought, but.
Actually, did look at the menu declare, not even close.
No, the motion to adjourn.
Not even close. So I'll be discussing.
Second, can't feel seconded by Mr. Gilmore.
Aye.
All is better.
Aye, aye.